Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our work session on the students attending schools out of attendance areas. As I'm sure you're all aware, this is a follow-up work session to one that we had over the summer, where we had identified some questions. We were basically looking at the effectiveness of the policy, the new policy that we had put in about two years ago, and we were looking at the effectiveness over the summer, and we had some questions arise about some data that we wanted to look at. And so now we're reconvening to talk about those data points and what we found out. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Lockard.
Thank you, President Sivigni. Good afternoon, everybody, and you basically summarized everything that I was going to say. We have some folks here with us this afternoon to help lead through the work session. As you mentioned, as a result of the last work session, staff was tasked with going back and getting some more information, some more data to share, present some possible options, recommendations, plus pros and cons associated, so that we can have a well-informed discussion. So with that, I'll ask Cindy McCabe, our Chief of Schools, to welcome our guests and take us into the presentation.
Excellent, thank you. So with us today, who we did not have last time, is Christina Dockerty, the principal at South Carroll High. Next to me, we have Joe Guera, the principal at Manchester Valley. And we've also extended an invitation to Randy Pence, one of our athletic directors. He is running late, so if he comes in, he'll be seated next to Mike Duffy, our supervisor of athletics. But as Dr. Lockard said, we're here today to follow up on the last work session we had. Today, we're back with some of the data that you asked us for, along with some options and pros and cons. And then we also have some follow-up information on the JROTC program that was a part of our conversation last time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Strecker.
All right, thank you, Ms. McCabe, and good afternoon, Board members, and Dr. Lockard. Lockard, oh, I did that. Wow. Maybe that's my only miss for the day. That's good. So we're going to, we've compiled some data. I appreciate the team putting things together, and we've had some discussion over this as we kind of try to dissect, at your request, the things we want to give you and present to you about the analysis of the out-of-district. So as we discussed in the September meeting, we focused on the athletic impact. So we'll start with an analysis of last year's data that we were able to look through. So the summary of last year's data, 313 total high school students were enrolled as out-of-district students throughout the county. It's broken down on the graph by the number of students who participate in athletics and students who do not participate in athletics, and also broken down by their class, seniors, juniors, sophomores, freshmen. So you can see that we have more seniors participating out-of-district at 110 students, the fewest students are freshmen at 59. And then in addition to that, you can see that the athletics participation rate remains relatively steady, but the students not participating in athletics seems to grow over time, that they're going to out-of-district. And that can be for a variety of reasons. It has situations where a student may request to stay in their home school, and the parents have moved, so they're a sophomore in high school, and their parents move out of district, and they want to stay in the school that they had been attending for two years. That would be now an out-of-district because they moved. That would be a reason why an upperclassman may contribute to upperclassmen. And also, I think as students become more mobile, perhaps with the ability to drive and have different relationships develop, or the need to establish new relationships, they would have the ability to move. So maybe some of the other reasons you're seeing changes in the upperclassmen instead of, you know, as much of the freshmen, sophomores. So just globally, that's how we broke it down. Total high school out-of-district, 313, and then you see it broken down by grade level. We focused on the athletics participation. So a couple of things, the way this is arranged, is to share with you that a senior does, is the only group, seniors are the only group of students that have the ability to actually be enrolled for all four years of their participation, because they're the only students who attend for all four. So we had 15 seniors that were out-of-district in that school for all four years that they were out-of-district. Five students who were enrolled for only three years, and then seven students for each two years and one year. Juniors, 20 of the students were enrolled their entire time eligible as an out-of-district student, and only two of them had moved for two years and six for one. So eight students total moved after they had started their high school career. And again, broken down that way for sophomores, 19 of the 21 students basically started their high school career at their out-of-district school. And of course, freshmen, they only have one option there. All of them are in their first year. So to kind of show you over time, particularly look at seniors, that almost half the seniors that are out-of-district, 15 of them have been there their entire school career. They're not moving late in the process. And that's for students, of course, that, as it mentions, that are participating in So looking through that, we have a couple of options that we'd like to propose for your consideration. First is to continue with our current practice as it is in place. That would be one option. The second one is to modify our current practice with regard to participation in athletics with the caveats as described. Students approved for an out-of-district placement who are CCPS varsity athletes during the preceding year will be placed on restricted eligibility for one year for the corresponding sport. So that is to say, if a student was a sophomore in high school and played varsity football and then went out-of-district to another school, they would be on restricted eligibility for varsity football at their new school. If they wanted to play soccer, cross-country, whatever, they would be able to do that. But they would be on restricted eligibility for the sport that they participate as a varsity athlete in the preceding year. So that's what option B is identifying. Option C modifies the current practice relating to participation in athletics just more globally to all students. Students approved for out-of-district placement will not be eligible to participate in athletics for one school year, regardless of their participation previously. They just would not be able to participate in athletics at all. And then option D, which we understand, as we discussed at the September meeting, there was concern about that previous practice and the lack of mobility, but it is an option we can always return to, is return to previous practice prior to 16, 17 school year. So those are the options that we have to look through. So we want to look at the pros and cons of the options. Option A, which is continue with our current practice. The pros for that are flexibility for students and families to choose an open school. It maximizes the available seats in our schools that are under 97% capacity or utilization, and the community is familiar with the process, and is a streamlined application process. The cons that we see with that, and these are concerns basically that have been brought up, that in-district students' athletic opportunity is impacted by out-of-district students. That's the concern that was raised by the community, and some of you had brought that up at the last meeting. And then concerns that express that the current practice limits community teams because of some mobility concerns that came up. So that was the pros and cons for option A. Option B, which is, again, modifying relating to athletics, and this is the option that if a student participates in a specific sport as a varsity athlete, the following year cannot participate in that specific varsity sport. The pros are the flexibility for students to choose an open school, so very similar to A. It also maximizes the availability of the seats. Application process would be the same as far as it being streamlined, and it does, we believe, it would address concerns raised regarding students transferring between Carroll County schools for athletic reasons. The cons that we would see with that is it restricts participation for that student that's a varsity athlete if they're approved to attend. So the very thing that it adds, we would see as a potential con for that individual student, not having access to that particular varsity sport. Option C, which is the current practice modified, that no students could participate in athletics for one year if they're an out-of-district student. Very similar pros, the flexibility for families to choose an open school, maximizing the capacity. Application process would be the same, and again, addresses concern raised regarding students transferring between Carroll County schools for athletic reasons. We believe that would be accomplished. The cons would be that all students who are approved as out-of-district student would lose one year of eligibility across the board, not relating to their varsity status or different sports that they played in the past. It would just, it would be more simplified, but perhaps not the best for kids. And then option D, returning to our previous practice. Our pros would be that we did conduct the out-of-district process on an annual basis. It was every year, people had to turn those in. That could be interpreted as a pro. It has some cons to it as well, but it does have a, the pro of we would annually review that, each case. And then the cons are definitely reduces flexibility for students and families for school choice if we went back to that practice. To be candid, as a committee, we struggled a bit with the pros and cons of D, and we did have conversation, based on your feedback from the September meeting, that that wasn't necessarily a direction we were looking to go into, but it was always an option that we could pursue.
And I think that's a valid perception. And I think, in general, everybody agrees that this new policy is better in aggregate, right? I mean, we had a couple of issues that we might want to pinpoint and address, but I think overall, the new out-of-district attendance policy is one that we think is a net positive for the county, so.
And I think the data supports that. When you look at how many students are able to move and the flexibility that they have, I think we've gotten mainly positive feedback through the current practice. So I just want to remind the Board, if we were going to amend the current practice, meaning anything other than A, staying with what we do, that we would take direction from you to provide new parameters. What direction do you have, is it's your policy that we would want, that you would want changed, and we would put those together? We would present that to you at a board meeting. So to give you perspective, if this was something you were looking to change for next school year, just to lay it out that way, it might be a little bit easier to follow, you would provide us direction for what to change. We would have that together, hopefully by the January board meeting. We would present that at the January board meeting. It would go out for public feedback. If you approved it, if it needed modification, it would maybe come back around. But if you were approving that, it would go out for public comment, and then it would be voted on at the February board meeting, and then we would start the process for out-of-district. Our typical out-of-district timeline, we would start that in mid-January is when we start. So if we're going to make a change for one year, we'd have to shift those due dates for the lottery and whatnot for our open schools, in case they become closed. But it's achievable for us to do that within the first year, and then say, year one, these are the timelines, and then in subsequent years, we would go back to our January timeframe, if that's something that the Board would like to do, if we're looking at changing the policy.
Do you happen to know which schools this is looking like it's mostly happening in?
As far as which schools the students are going to specifically?
I think we had that in the, in the previous presentation, didn't we present that? I don't know if anybody has a copy.
Right, I have the, I have the slide from the last, like, the last presentation that we did. We talked about the total number of students going in and out of each school. You know, we, like, for example, Century High School over in the '17, '18 school year had 38 students in and 31 students out. In the '18, '19 school year had 49 students in and 25 students out. So we presented that last board meeting of, I guess I call it the net migration between each school throughout the course of time, before the policy was changed and after. And generally speaking, we didn't see a tremendous shift in that data when that policy was enacted. We also had the net migration from '09, '10, all the way through '18, '19, that didn't show, like, when we put the policy in place, all of a sudden, many more students were out-of-district across the system. So Ms. Pataglia, I hope that answers that question.
And that was for everybody. It wasn't isolated to the athletics situation. It was for all students.
And I, to be candid, if we were looking at those students, and when we have seven students, we wouldn't be able to share the specific students, because then we're going to become personally identifiable to those students. If it's only seven students that are seniors that are participating in athletics for one year outside, you know, as an out-of-district student, we would be in a situation where we would be identifying, if they went to this school, this school, or this school, then we would say that's a person identifiable situation, so.
Well, I'm glad you brought up that specific example, because I appreciate the time and thought process that went behind putting together the options and the pros and cons of each. But I think what we probably need to do is go back and decide whether we think that this actually is a problem, right? Like, so does the data indicate that we think that we have a problem that we need to address, right? Because previously, it had just been based on anecdotal comments, right? Of saying, okay, we think this is an issue based on things that we're hearing anecdotally from the community. So now this gives us the data to decide whether we think it really is a problem or not. So does it make sense to, you know, go back to the third or fourth slide in terms of, okay, looking at the number of seniors?
And how long they've been there?
And how long they've been there. Right, because I think, is it fair to say that as a group, what we were primarily concerned about is this situation, right? Like, folks that were standout players in one school and other moving to a different school?
Right.
And taking up spots on those community teams and reducing opportunities for some other students? And that, is that a, is that a fair statement of what we think the concern was?
Yes, and I can give you examples of what I see.
Well, and I think I can give you examples. I think most of the recruiting happens prior to high school. It happens in club teams, it happens in AAU teams, and those kids are there for four years, and, and, and it's flat-out recruiting. And unfortunately, a couple of high schools, it led to actually recruiting kids from outside the county. I mean, we had a, we had a kid in sports in Carroll County not too many years ago. One lived in Salisbury, one lived in Baltimore City, one lived in Harrod County. I'm sure they lied on their forms, but it just, I wish we could do something about the recruiting and not do this. But, but a couple of questions I had, do these numbers reflect, or is there any differentiation between, "I'm a 10th grader, my parents moved, but I want to finish at Francis Guy Key"?
No, the data we put out there is the aggregate, all the students that, that moved. So there are a total of, I think it's 31, I can go back a slide, it's a total of 34 seniors participating in athletics that are out-of-district, for all those reasons.
Yeah.
For a student who, who may have moved because of a desired team they wanted to be on, for a student who is staying in their home school, and there, and those are some of the challenges, I think, Mr. Kyler, when you, when you think about making a policy that might restrict a student.
Yes.
Because that student would now be a student who was participating in varsity athletics, who is now out-of-district.
Yes, but stayed in the same school.
Stayed in their school.
And that's what, the groups I've been associated with that try to curb recruiting, which is hard. There's almost always an appeal process, and there's some criteria, because it's, it's hard. And again, me just looking at this, part of me really likes, because the recruiting happens in 7th and 8th grade, is they sit out of here. Now, if you stay in the same school and your parents move, you shouldn't have to sit out of here. Now, but how much, how long do you make these rules, and what order do you do? It's a shame, and like I say, it really, it really bugs me when I see the kids coming from out of county. And you can look at, you can look at a couple of different, very successful programs and look at, it's because they're pulling in three, four, or five kids from out, that aren't in their school. And is that fair? Like, Marsha brought up earlier, is that fair to the kids in the school who would be starters on that team and now are second string because recruiting happened? And?
Or they didn't make the team at all.
And, and, and I've been involved in sports a long time, and it's hard to look at this recruiting, that it isn't the coach's ego. What's, what's it do, you know? What's it do if, I'll use North Carroll since it isn't a school anymore, if North Carroll wins states three years in a row? What, what's that do for anybody? You know, I mean, it doesn't get you a college scholarship, it doesn't, it, it's ego. And, but a lot of the recruiting is also groups of parents who want their school to, to be the state championship, and, and you see that in the youth programs, you see that in AAUs, you see that all over the place. And I guess the question is, is it important enough to do something about it?
It is important, because I coached for a long, long time, and I've been in athletics for a long, long time. But I am telling you, Westminster High School, for example, is a community. But when you go and watch basketball last winter, and four of the five starters on that team were out-of-district, and I have parents calling me and like, what's going on? This is not fair. This is a community. If they want to play, they should move into the Westminster District. And that's where the problem is, and I understand that. And I look at those freshmen, 30 freshmen, if they're out-of-district, they need to sit out of here. Because I agree, Kenny, those AAU teams, they're recruiting them, and it might not be coaches all the time, it's parents and, and the kids, and I understand that. Everybody likes a winner. But it's not fair to those kids in that community that go to that school, are either sitting on the bench, got cut, or don't do anything at all. And with these phone calls I've gotten, I've had principals and vice principals of high schools call me because their kid is now sitting on the bench. And not only that, they, they're causing problems. Their attendance is not as great, they're not making their grades after the season, and it's like each, each little area, you know, you have your little wrestling area, you have your high school basketball area that they've done, football, you can definitely see where that was, if anybody paid any attention, who was starting on some of those teams. And I'm not naming names, but I am telling you, you could see it. And high schools are communities, and they need to stay communities. And if those kids want to transfer, they either need to move to that area or sit out of here. It's not fair. I coached, I know, those kids go to camps, they spend unbelievable amount of times playing basketball, right-handed, left-hand, shots, all that kind of stuff. And then a new person comes in and they set the bench. Now, I know that's part of life, but they're community first, and that's why I am, that's how I, that's why I feel like I do. Because I coached, I coached varsity hockey. My God, those girls worked, they, we were a community. And yes, I did have a girl come in from Australia. Now, she didn't transfer, she was a student, you know, one of those exchange students. But we didn't have that, and I know, I lived, I lived in the dark ages, and I know it's now a new thing, because I started teaching and coaching when, you know, it was Dirk just began. But anyway, you know, I don't care. We're all human beings, and we have a right to take care of our kids, and we're not doing that. It is a community, and I cannot say enough on that. It's, you know, and I am very concerned with those 30, new 30 kids coming in.
Yeah. I'd be interested to know if any of them actually tried out for the team, because that could be another thing that needs to be looked at. I mean, are these kids actually trying out, or are they sitting at home and then they're told they're on the team? I mean, that could be another problem as well.
We're all not perfect, but I just know, from the phone calls, emails, it's just that little dig in the back for these parents, and I understand.
I do want to clarify that that means they participated in athletics, not necessarily varsity.
Absolutely.
So just to be clear, those 30 students, some of them could be varsity student, varsity athletes, some of them could be three-sport athletes, some of them may be just playing JV basketball.
And I don't want to go back.
Or not even playing, I don't know, just, you know.
Right, and I don't want to go back to the old system. There was a reason we did that. But the day afterwards, I'll never forget how many phone calls and emails from coaches that I knew, "Do you all realize just what you did?" And, and we didn't think that, and it didn't happen right away. But now it's very obvious now, last winter, and this fall, it's very obvious of what's going on.
Is it, is it appropriate to get some comments from, from principals and from staff on?
That's why we brought it up.
Yeah, I was at athletics, athletics, did you get here yet?
I mean, I agree, it's abused. I agree, there's recruiting, there's, nobody's going to convince me otherwise, but do others perceive it as a problem, or is it so minor, who cares? You know, I'm not sure.
And I'd also kind of like to go back to your original point that you made about the, what does it get the, the coaches for recruiting, like, other than ego? Like, is it, is it really an issue that we're having with students and parents, or is it an issue that we're having with the coaches? And do you address it with the coaches rather than penalizing the kids if?
Right. So I?
Michael, do you want to comment on the coaches?
Sure. I'll, I'll speak based on the information I've received from our athletic directors, that coaches are not doing the majority of, are not spending their time recruiting at the high school level. They're spending their time preparing and coaching. I think, a couple of things. Number one, success recruits very well, which then coaches don't have to go out and sell a program, they're not doing that. I'm not saying that no coach has never spoken to a child, I think that would be disingenuous for me to suggest such a thing. But what I am saying is, parents, AAU, club, those things are doing the majority of recruiting. Our high school coaches are not spending their time doing that. That's what's having a lot of students move between schools, or students want, again, I go back to success recruiting a lot, that students want to go where there is success. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I also understand the mentality of the teenage mind of, I, I've only got a short time, I want to win. I get that, too. But I, as far as the major recruiting thing, and it, coaches, I was sitting next to one of the county football coaches last night in a basketball scrimmage, and he started talking about youth football. And he says, "People think, people think I'm crazy, but I'm never going to a football, to a youth football game because I'm not that interested." He said, "If someone has time to do that, good on them, because I don't, I have a family, and I want to spend time with my family when I'm not coaching football." And I think we need to keep that all in perspective. And I will speak briefly to that 30 freshman. I'm a huge proponent of students getting a connection to a school. And to say, and I, to not look at all the particulars of a student, why he or she might transfer or start out at a new school as a 9th grader, to tell them you can't do sports for an entire year, I don't think serves the best interest of a student to try and find that connection. Again, if the student's going for athletics, my concern is, setting up some sort of blanket statement like that opens up for more dishonesty on behalf of families and doesn't benefit students. And I think, I would, I would ask that, you know, whatever decision is made, please make sure that what we're trying to do is keep the best interest of our kids in mind, because I don't want them stuck in the middle of it.
And I do understand that. And I will tell you, I don't care what rule you make.
Someone will find a way.
They're gonna, they're, somebody's going to beat the system, and I do know that. And I know, when I coached, or when anybody coaches now, everyone doesn't like the basketball coach, or everyone doesn't like that. You know, I was hard-nosed, and, you know, you either loved me or hated me, and there was nothing else. But I know, it's the same way now. Yes, they will, they will congregate to winners, and, and I do understand that part. But it was very important that also, there's, there's always one more way to get around and beat the system. It is, I know that.
Wasn't the old SEC motto, "If you ain't cheating, you ain't trying"?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm curious on two things. One, and tonight isn't the time, if you'd like a list of coaches that actively recruit both in and out of the county, I can give you a list. And now, it's, it's 5%. It's not the majority of the coaches, and I totally agree with that. I'm curious, and if you don't want to say, that's fine, too. Do you think it was worse or the same in Harrod County? Do you think, was anybody concerned about it there? Is, because it happened there, too. Yeah, I know, you're smiling, but, but, you know, it does happen, and, and success breeds a lot of it, and you're right, but.
I, I will say, the, there was not open enrollment, so that made it much more difficult.
Okay.
What it, what it led to was dishonesty or backdoor moves. It didn't lead It didn't lead, uh, it wasn't a matter of recruiting specifically because a student wanted to go to a different school. It, it became much more, um, dishonest and labor-intensive on behalf of the families.
Yeah, and, and it's simple maybe to go out of our county. Um, Owens Mills, you know, there were so many fake addresses and, and it's just how things happen. Now, is it right? No. Is it, you know, even out of the total student population, is 30 significant or not? You know, it's, it's, I struggle with this. I hate to see it, but you don't want to hurt, like for instance, kids that their parents move and they want to stay at their school. That's not recruiting. That's not, you know, that's loyalty to the school, they want to stay there and we should make sure they can.
And I think also one of the, oh, I'm-
I was, we could, I mean, at your direction, we could develop whatever practice we have. If that's something, I mean, the broad scope in which I provided that would, would not address that. But we could add that in a regulation. If that's the direction you choose to go and one of those options and say, you know, should a student remain in their out-of-district status is because they're remaining in their home district? We can certainly work those nuances out. And I would prefer to do that on the front end rather than dealing with, like you mentioned, appeal process on the back.
Oh, I know.
I would rather try to clear those things up, but to the point of with somebody's, there's always somebody trying to find a, a way around it. Yes.
Well, there's also an additional distinction though, is that, you know, if you're looking at the 30 kids, to, to your point, Mr. Duffy, where you said, you know, you want to promote the, the connection to the school. These are all the freshmen that are out of district that participate in athletics. We don't know that athletics is the only reason why they made that move. It could have been for an academic reason and they happen to play a sport.
And again, that goes back to the-
That's some skewing to this number.
Or bowling or, or social.
We have, I, I mean, anecdotally, we are aware of many of those cases where a student who wasn't honestly even going to play a sport, hadn't played a sport before, ended up at an out-of-district. And some friends said, hey, why don't you go out for the whatever team? And then the kid's like, well, sure. And then now, you know, it was a JV team, it wasn't, but the concept was wasn't an athletic student, certainly not going for athletic reasons, who socially got engaged, which is what we want. A student for other reasons went. And that's what we, I think that's what we struggle with, right? That for those students, we wouldn't want to put anything in place that hurts. And, and that's why a lot of thought went into our, our proposals, um, of, you know, to, to try to get at the student who might be jumping for the sole purpose of athletics once they're established. And, and, you know, when you look at the options that are laid out, the, the second option B is it's laid out is for students who already participating as a varsity athlete. So they're identified as a student with a level of skill or whatever, they're a varsity athlete, moving, they can't go for that same sport. Um, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons why as a staff, we kind of came up with that option for your consideration. Um, it doesn't address, Ms. Herbert, to your point of, you know, if it's happening at the middle school level. I mean, we, we struggled with the concept of looking at the feeder patterns. And if you were already in the feeder pattern for, because we have the data that looked at how long a student was already in their feeder pattern. Um, you know, and that gets a little bit dicey because some of our schools are split feeder patterns. So students at West Middle School, the feeder pattern is, is it Westminster High or is it Winter Mill High? So it's easier in, for South Carroll Liberty and Century because they're direct feeds. But even in those communities, um, you know, you could find a student who was at Sykesville Middle for three years and went to Century and, and were out of district the entire time. That could be a family situation. It could be a sports situation, you know? But for us to try from a manpower perspective, to put together a policy that's going to try to get at that, it's truly not feasible for us to, to really go at that. Um, I would beg you not to ask us to do that because we could try it, but I would be concerned.
I would like to hear feedback from South Carroll. Yes, on the pros and cons of a principal and you've dealt with it.
Um, it's a mixed bag, it really is. And it's some of the things that you've already alluded to. When I, um, when I was at Francis Scott Key as an assistant principal, this was not a big issue. Um, we had several kids leave for bullying reasons and I think they were true at-risk kids that were struggling socially. Um, so I think that was true. Um, coming into South Carroll, and I'm not sure the year we went to open, um, open enrollment, but I feel like I had-
Sixteen, seventeen.
Okay. I had the tail end last year of kids that came to South Carroll with phony addresses. Um, we had a really successful winter sports program there in a couple of areas. And we had students using phony addresses, five students used the same address coming in. And I had the tail end of those kids as seniors and it was a nightmare. Um, the behavior was very challenging with them. Um, the families were challenging, but they weren't, I didn't really feel like they were my South Carroll families because they were living really kind of all, they weren't really living where they said they were living. Um, and at least three of those students last year weren't academically eligible. Um, and it got really ugly, making it the teacher's fault. And the kids weren't living in South Carroll, so they were rolling in about nine o'clock. You know, these three kids were rolling in at nine o'clock, so they weren't in their classes. So that was very challenging. But I felt like that was more skirting of the issue. You know, that wasn't this true open enrollment issue. Um, we had a student leaving my tenure there and, uh, the feeling was that this student wanted to go play sports at another high school. Um, and they wrote an application that alleged a lot of ugly things going on at South Carroll, which really upset me as a first-year principal. Um, I read it with PPW. I was appalled at the things that, the allegations that were in the letter. I called the parent, um, we're not talking to you, Click, we're not talking about this. And after I, I looked into it, I talked to some people that were involved in the letter, um, came to find, find out this was mainly a sports thing. Um, probably didn't have anything to do with the things they were alleging. And they wouldn't let me respond to it. They didn't have any interest in talking about it. Um, so we've had some small, strange, isolated issues. Um, I know it's a powerful topic with some people that I work with because they're, they're parents and have kids at other places and their kids aren't able to play. Um, they feel a little shortened because of sports. Um, so there are some issues, there certainly are some issues. But I think that they are isolated and kind of peppered in here for a couple of different reasons.
Joe?
Joe, yeah.
Yeah, having, having worked at four different high schools in the county, um, I, and I've seen that, um, schools at the same time could, could be on both sides of the fence with the out-of-district thing for athletics. Um, you know, I think that we've seen kids, I think all the principals can, can agree that we've seen kids that have changed high schools for, um, other reasons that it's been necessary and it's, and it's been a good thing. They flourished in a new environment with new surroundings and new set of circumstances. Uh, personally, I don't think athletics should be one of those reasons. Um, and just looking at, you know, looking at the options here, I, I feel like, you know, um, looking at option B with restricted eligibility, I mean, I, to Ken's point, one of the things that that doesn't address is, is the incoming, uh, ninth graders because they haven't played a varsity sport. So there's that aspect of it. Um, just feel like something, whether it's option B or C, really would, would show the intent, I guess, of, of a family or a student, parents that are looking to move, uh, to a different school. If, if that is taken away from them either completely or with, you know, doing restricted eligibility, them not being able to participate would show the true intentions, I think, for, you know, for, for parents wanting to do that.
Thank you. Eric, do you have anything?
Yeah, and I was in an interesting situation that certainly when, in my tenure at South Carroll, we had many championships in many sports. And our PPWs were very busy tracking some of them down who weren't true South Carroll kids. And as you guys know, you know the kids, you know the families. They know these kids just show up, but they were very good at fi- I mean, some of these kids, the parents had hired lawyers to falsify documents. And I don't know that we can ever stop some of those things. And as Michael said, the winning attracted them. I, I can't say 100% if those coaches did or did not communicate with those kids, but they saw the records. And I'll never forget, I was there in my second year and a kid showed up and the registrar was in the middle of the summer, said, come meet this kid, he's a star wrestler from Pennsylvania. Little guy, typical wrestler. And I shook his hand and I'm like, hey, you know, we're really good. And he looked at me like I was a moron. Why do you think I'm here? He told his mom, I want an apartment there to go to South Carroll. Now, he wasn't doing anything wrong. They truly did live in that apartment for about six months. But this kid was from three hours up into Pennsylvania and had finished second or third in the state tournament. So he got on the early internet, figured out who has the best program down in Carroll County and he showed up. So there was that before this policy. And then at Winter's Mill, I was there as unfortunately, we saw some athletes leave. There's no question, I can't deny that. We saw some of our better athletes and it's very easy, they can drive across town. It was not a hardship for them. So, and I guess as someone who also currently coaches youth sports and is around youth sports in most of my hours that I'm not at work, you cannot accurately predict who the, you know, to go along with what Michael and Carl said, those who think they know the best, the sixth or seventh graders are going to be star athletes, it's a guess. There are so many factors. But the kids do talk, the sixth graders, the top athletes, where are you going to go? Where are you going to go? And again, I don't think we can defeat that, but when we look at something like option B, at least we can cut the top off of it with our stars. Let's be honest, we know some of the names, I know who the, the names are as well, who played at school A and then go at school B. I hear the same thing from parents. Can you believe he's here? That at least I think we can address and then see what, what does it look like in reality? Because we all know what a written policy looks like. See how that goes. See if that improves our situation as far as what we are hearing and, and the competitive balance. And, but still balancing all the kids that are going out of district and it benefits them and their family greatly. And it had nothing to do with athletics.
And I do understand that. And I don't want to, I don't want to have that person that is having a social, uh, go elsewhere. But I also don't want those top athletes trying to make a powerhouse team. And I know Dagon well because I've been up there and I saw him write down athletics on their application. And I, I, it's just, it's a community-based school.
Sure.
And that's, we're not, we're not being fair to our students and our parents that have been loyal and have been there for them through and through. And then you get two or three new kids that, and it only takes one or two kids to change the dynamics of a varsity team. I don't care if it's the basketball team or if it's a wrestling team or it's, um, any, any other. It, it only takes one or two kids. And in, and in wrestling, you've got to fill that one spot, that one weight class that will make you a state champion. You know? Or you may, need a forward to bring the ball down. And it's not, and I want to make sure, it's in girls' sports too. And I do, I want to make sure that is clear too.
Yeah.
Because I know that's going down the road now and basketball's down that end.
And softball, softball's coming up.
But what worries me, let's, let's say we come to consensus that we, we need to fix something. I just, it's, it's, it's like you said, and, and well, a couple of you said, this isn't going to fix the lying, the, the, that stuff.
No.
And so if that's half of the star athletes and we end up punishing three kids that really need to change schools to survive and a sport makes them happier, I, I just hate to see that. I, I hate to see us punish a family that's sincere and, and there are some very honest and sincere families and have, and some big needs. And, and I just, because I agree with you, it's an issue, but are we going to fix it with this?
And I understand that.
I completely, I completely understand and agree with where you're coming from, Ms. Herbert. And, but Kenny, I think you've hit the nail on the head in terms of what is- We're trying to address some very specific abusive issues by a very small number of people. And you don't want to impact negatively the, the lar- much larger group of kids that are doing this potentially for different reasons or that athletics are, are an overall help to them in their social situation. So what's the least onerous way for us from a policy perspective to address the couple of abusive situat- or, you know, I put that in quotes, abusive situations?
One thing I definitely want to clarify is some of the things have come up that are frustrations and, and I hear the frustrations are things that no policy would address. A student moving from Pennsylvania to live in an apartment in South Carroll is a resident in the community. No out-of-district policy is going to stop that. So you can take that one off the list. A kid who lives in Baltimore County, who has an established residency through, um, a kinship care or some other avenue that makes them a bona fide resident of that district is not going to be impacted by out-of-district. So I think I want to be clear, at least the board is aware and the community at large that, that there are scenarios where students who are new to the school community, who aren't kids that have been in the school community for a long time, uh, may have every right to attend the school as an in-district student, um, but they may be new. And it's not as, just the student maybe who's a, an international student who comes in or the student who just moves into the area. Those, um, if somebody's trying to move because they want to move because they know that that team is really good, um, if they rent an apartment and they're that motivated and they believe that if I rent an apartment and my kid starts on that basketball team, that's going to get them a scholarship, that family's going to spend that $1,200 a month because they think it might save them $25,000 a year for four years, they're probably going to spend the 1,200 bucks a month, at least during basketball season. I mean, just to give an example. So the struggle I think in this is it's a small number of kids, uh, relative to the large school system who have a big impact and it's frustrating for the people who are doing the right thing. And, and our, our charge is to try to mitigate that and balance that. Um, and, you know, we, we struggle with the same thing. And when you look at the numbers and peel them back from the last presentation and focus it now on athletics as, as the slide is showing right now, um, I, I would like to go back and just not forget of, look at the overwhelming number of students who aren't participating in athletics. In any decision that we make, I think we would be in agreement that we don't want to impact the kids who aren't participating in athletics negatively by this decision. But we'd also not want to limit their ability to engage in their school community. So that's, that's the other balance. So, um, it's certainly difficult to wrestle with. And that's why as staff, we put together some options that we thought would, would get at the core of some of the issues. Um, the sitting out for a year with option C, you know, the con of that is no matter what your situation and certainly at your direction, we could amend those pieces. Uh, but that would take away every freshman, you know? So any freshman who's out of district can't participate in any sport. Um, to Mr. Duffy's point, I think we encourage all of our freshmen. I mean, every high school principal stands up in front of every eighth grade group and parents coming in, get your kids involved unless you're out of district. Well, I'm here for a legitimate reason. I mean, you know, so that would be a struggle. Um, option B does try to address the student who is a known varsity athlete. And that's why we took the time to write that in there. The kid's already a varsity athlete and is now transferring. Not a student who played JV as a sophomore and is now a varsity, you know, eligible for varsity because they're a junior. Um, my, in, my inclination would be that's not a student who's necessarily moving to play. Generally speaking, it wouldn't have been an all-star student because they weren't a varsity student as a sophomore. So that's why we kind of threw that one in as an option. But we know that nothing we do will prevent everything. It's just a matter of how can we address it at some level? Or do we leave it the way it is and, you know, navigate from there? That's kind of why you all need to give us direction on how we want to go about this.
And I've got a question. there's a lot of, a lot of recruiting goes on prior to high school, but B is a, is a way to do it. And again, and, and I respect what you said about the feedback from the coaches because like the kids, um, 30 freshmen aren't a problem, probably six. Um, coaches aren't a problem. I, I guarantee you, if a coach has three kids using the same address, they know it. Um, again, like I say, I can tell you coaches who went to adjacent counties to youth practices and said, I want you on my team and don't worry, I can make it work. Do we do anything to those coaches? Should we look at that and say, you know, if, if, uh, you know, yeah, your job is to coach, your job is to win, but your job is to keep kids academically eligible. Your job is to not teach kids to be liars. Um, and, and it's, I'm old and, 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 you know, you see kids go through D1 sports, you see kids, 90% of them that think they're going to get a scholarship. I mean, I had a, I had a parent come to practice one night and say, uh, um, he's in a little bit of trouble. He's getting a, a D and he hasn't done homework lately. And I said, well, take him home. Well, no, he needs this to get to college. I said, trust me, he's not good enough, number one, in this. But two, if he's not academically eligible, they don't want him. You know, most colleges. Now, we're not talking football and basketball, that may be different, the big revenue sports. But again, you can look at that kid and see who's going to make it and who isn't too. But in the non-revenue sports, and I tell kids in our program, you, you want to get money to get in college? Get straight As. Do other extracurriculars. Get looked at for other reasons. Um, the money isn't there for some of these sports, but parents don't want to hear it, you know? And, and if you've been through it, you recognize it, but, but I, I don't know.
I can tell you that one thing that, um, Mr. Duffy has been doing is in his meetings with athletic directors and then in our meetings with coaches, um, ethics is one thing that we really have been pushing. And so, yes, we're talking about it with them and we can certainly follow up and look into some of the things that you're describing.
So Mr. Duffy, when you do your, um, when the athletic directors give you their rosters and they don't put addresses on that, but somewhere those coaches should know- But somewhere those coaches should know, are, do have addresses? I know when you have to do, send everything into MPSSA, all those, all those forms. They don't have the individual student's name, the grade, uh, like if they're in the second semester, third semester or whatever. And then, but there's no addresses on that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, MPSSA does not ask for that information. And for the most part, the coaches aren't seeing it as much anymore now that we're, we're going to an online system and it's overseen by the athletic directors. They're the ones who are overseeing that portion. So in your, in your example, Mr. Kyler, it would be more, it would be on the athletic director seeing multiple, uh, multiple students at an address. It wouldn't be the individual coach.
Unless he told them to do it.
Sure, but again, even then the coach wouldn't be, uh, the coach is not the one who's seeing the addresses as much. It's overseen by the athletic directors.
And all the years I coached, I only had two girls get Division One scholarships. So I agree, you've got to have the academics and it's not the athletics. And you know, and I can, I can honestly say that, you know?
Could not agree more.
And I coached a long time and it, it's not there. And yes, they might get a thousand or two when they play basketball at a small, you know, at a smaller school. But you know, everybody's parents are all dreaming for that big Division One free ride. You gotta be a horse to do that. I mean, an athle-, athlete. And I, I just know from experience that, you know, and it's sad in some states. Because a lot of parents put a lot of that in there and they buy those, you know, get coaches to coach them on the sidelines more and all that. And a lot of it doesn't pan out.
So I guess the thing I'd ask is, uh, moving forward, um, I explained the timeline. If we're gonna make a change to kinda where we are pressing, I think if we're gonna make a change for the 1920 school year, that's now.
2021.
2021 school year. Sorry about that. For the 2021 school year, um, feasibly, we would need direction, uh, very soon in order to put a plan together that could come to the board for January to go out for public comment, to be approved in February, that we could, truly, that's a timeline. I would be really concerned if we kick that back a month and we're bringing you a plan in February for approval in March, uh, for implementation. That, that's really gonna pinch. Uh, Mr. Mongol, we, from a, uh, our practice is usually January, February, we open out of district. So even as a, the most aggressive approach is what I'm suggesting is we bring something to you in January. I, I think it's pretty unrealistic that if we bring something to you in February, we're gonna be able to change the 2021 school year. Um, nothing's impossible. Uh, if we all work together, we can do anything. So we'll pull it off if that's your direction. Um, but I just wanna remind you of that, the timeframe that that puts us under. So, um, you know, we wanna, we've provided information. We've had good discussion and, and shared our, our desires and some of the frustrations we see with this. Um, we also have information about ROTC that Mr. King's gonna share. Um, do you have thoughts on where we go from here?
I've got another question. I seem to have plenty. Um, and, and again, I've seen, uh, one of the schools that, that you were at, one team was losing kids, the other team was bringing in kids. You know, and, and one coach would send an email, this is just a horrible policy. And I'm thinking, you know, yeah, do you, do you look down the hallway?
Mm-hmm.
I hate to see us hurt anybody because I, I think it's a good policy. But do we wanna do something? Maybe a B? And, and I, and I hate to see it because everybody here's got plenty to do. And then what if the public comment drives us to say, no, we're not gonna do it? You know, is that worth it on a problem like this? Or is that spinning our wheels and we oughta work on something else? I'm, I'm not sure.
Right, I mean, I think it's a legitimate question. And I, I think we're all sitting here saying, okay, there, there are some specific isolated situations that need to be addressed. But I think that we really wanna do it in the least onerous way so that we don't negatively impact the much larger group of students that we're talking about. So what is the, the least onerous way to do that? I think B is, is certainly the only one that I would wanna entertain at this point, right? Of B, C, or D. Um, but does it even need to be that? Does it need to be a policy change? Is there, like, I appreciate the comments that you made, Ms. McCabe, about ethics. And like, so are there, are there some guidelines that we can put in place? Like saying, okay, we're gonna have attendance requirements um, for these kids. We're gonna have academic requirements. We're gonna have, you know, if there are specific, like ethical issues saying, okay, well, we're gonna check into these individuals and if we think that there really is an ethical situation, then we're gonna question that. Or, you know, is there a way to put guidelines in place rather than making a wide-sweeping change to the policy?
I, I would suggest that we need, if, if you wanna actually affect change, you need to do other policy. Because ultimately, what would happen is if we tried putting those in practice with guidelines, the appeal process would ultimately land with you and then you will be measured on your decision of appeal based on, at the end of the day, at rest with, with the policy. Um, and I do wanna know too, just to add some fun, um, the state board decisions recently involving out-of-district have been overturned or sent back for, um, systems to offer more options. So, so the state board, the tenancy at the state board level is when an out-of-district has been denied to a student, um, in a couple cases that have recently gone within the past six months to a year, I think within six months. Um, one, they overturned and, and said that the, the board needed to let the student attend the school that they had requested, even though the, the staff made the decision, the local board upheld that decision and went to the state board, it was overturned. Uh, the other one was not overturned, but rather than just being heard and said, you know, we, we uphold the decision, they said it, like referred it back to the local board to give more options. So the state board is weighing in at a much higher level than they had been in the past relating to out-of-district. Um, almost to the point where it's our job to, um, to demonstrate that a student is not being bullied or what the student welfare situation is, which would be exceptionally hard for us to prove that a student was not being bullied. You know, we can, we can address when it's happening, but how do I say it's not happening depending on the day? So, um, and there's just two cases, but I just wanna give you the, the concept out there that, um, the appeal process goes through policy. So those guidelines would, I think, maybe make it more difficult. I think the training of coaches, to Ms. McCabe's point, I mean, that's something we could put in practice. But when the rubber meets the road of these situations happening, if we're gonna deny a student, um, we already have attendance policies in place. The student has to be present unless they're at a doctor, they have a grade, um, they have to maintain a 2.0 and no Fs, uh, in order to participate. So we have those pieces in place now. Um, again, that's where I think at the end of the day, I, I would say to Mr. Kyler, to your point of, could we draft something, bring it to the board for, um, January? Um, maybe tweak there at, at some point, but then put it out for public comment. And at the end of the day, if the board gets public comments as we're not interested in this or it's substantial tweaking beyond what's there, it has to go for another, maybe it's a year delayed in implementation. If it's something that we've kinda hit it pretty well, um, as far as what we bring to you in January and then goes out for public comment and you adopt it in February, we could do that. Um, I'd be comfortable being able to come up with a, with a change in the policy for that consideration. At the end of the day, if you vote it down, we're with option A, stay the same. So I think.
I just wanna make a comment about the timeline. I don't know if I'm right or not, but it also, the timeline for kindergarten enrollment, because you're gonna get kids who are wanting going to go out of district and we're gonna start the enrollment process in March for those students. So I just want you to keep in mind.
Also like to say, I, I agree with Carl. I think that the, the intent is to stop kids from transferring schools for the, for athletics specifically. I think option B or, or some modification of option B where, you know, we allow students to transfer schools as, as we have been for the, you know, for the, for the right reasons. Um, but it also, you know, if we do the restricted eligibility thing, gives the kid a connection to a team, to the school, like Mr. Duffy was saying. Um, but it also tests the intentions of the kid and the parents if, because they are giving up something there. They're giving up a year of participating in, in games and contests. Um, so that's, that's just.
Mr. Guar, good, I, and I don't know, just to, for the board's information, restricted eligibility, uh, just to make sure you're clear on what that is. Students can participate in practice. Uh, they just can't play in a game. So they're a part of the team without, so, so I, I should've clarified that. The concept of restricted eligibility, they can, they practice, uh, they don't travel, is that correct? I'm not sure.
No, they can travel. They can sit with.
Okay.
They just can't play.
So, so at the end of the day, they're, they're going, they can be part of the team at large, be part of practices, but they're not allowed to play in a game. So to Mr. Guar's point, they're giving up a lot, um, if that's truly why they're there. And at the same time, also the way we proposed option B, if, if they played football and rather play soccer, they can go play soccer. Or they could run cross-country. They could do a different sport. They just couldn't play the sport that they were a varsity student as the year before.
So it's just a single, whatever sports they had been.
Whatever, right. If they were a three-sport athlete, it would be those three sports they couldn't participate in. So.
Varsity to varsity.
Correct.
Yes.
So JV, like, again, to clarify, just because, you know, I'm sure this would be something people think through. A student who's a sophomore, as a JV athlete, transfers, goes out of district, would be able to participate as a varsity athlete the following year because they were not a varsity athlete the preceding year, um, in whatever sport that was.
Okay, then, and also Carl. So if you have a student that transfers from, let's say, from Liberty to Century. Now, if they go back to Liberty, they're done. Is that correct in transferring to that? But they cannot go back to Century.
No, if they.
How, how does that work?
Let me explain my understanding of that.
People need to know this.
Sure.
Because there's a.
Good question.
So we're not, we're not looking to change that part of the policy. So if a student's approved for an out-of-district placement, they can participate, you're always eligible to participate in your home school. And, and this doesn't change that. So you're always eligible to participate in the school that, that is within your residency. Um, if you are approved, you're a Liberty High School student, approved to go out of district to Century, you can play, subject to maybe option B's stipulations. But let's imagine it's a sophomore. Uh, that student goes to Century and says, you know, I'd really like to go to Westminster. They can't participate because they're only eligible to participate in the first school that they've accepted as an out-of-district. And that's in our current practice. So we don't have students able to move from their home school to another school and then to another school because prior to that implementation, we had that. We almost, my, I wasn't in this position, but my understanding is we had people almost switching by season to participate in different sports.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, because they knew that the best basketball team was here and the best baseball team was there. So they would go out of district each season at a time. Um, so that, you know, of all the nuances of things that didn't work well with the policy we're now, it stopped that.
So homeschool plus one, that's it?
Correct.
Okay.
But if you move, and I wanna be clear about this because this is where people would get confused. Well, that kid I knew was out of district. If they move or establish residence, they're in their home school. So, and that, that happens, you know?
That's what we wanna, we want, we want them to be in their home school.
I understand.
I know, it almost makes you wanna go back to option D and say, these are the specific reasons that you can request an out-of-district and go from there.
And Dr. Dorsey, when we did that, the dishonesty was rampant.
I know, I know.
Exceptionally rampant.
Yeah, I lived through it as well.
Yeah. Option D was similar to other experiences I've had in other school systems. And that was always the, the struggle was chasing down what was accurate and what wasn't.
That was definitely liar, liar, pants-on-fire on that one.
Well, that's right.
A lot of administrative paperwork.
That was crazy.
Yeah, I can remember having a, a young student sitting in the office saying, boy, I'm so tired of this long ride from Pony Town every day. And we're like, a long ride from Pony Town? What are you talking about? So then, you know, we track down what was happening. Right, right. So I know that, um, happens. But again, I guess I just didn't know that, um, that the athletic piece was just so important, I guess, um, in some families, especially when you talk about how they, some people were trying to go from one school to another school based on the sport and maybe making, trying to make two or three changes a year.
Right, or, or year to year as well.
Yeah.
So in the current, the current policy, you're only allowed to participate in your home school or one, or your, wait, not one. Your first approved out-of-district school. So not one at a time, but your first approved. So that was, that was addressed through that change. And, and in addition, we also, if you remember when that policy was put in place, we were, um, in declining enrollment and student, we had students that came, in declining enrollment and student, we had students that came, that were Carroll County families that were in private schools because they didn't want to go to the school that they were indistricted for. They wanted to participate in athletics at a different school. But because they couldn't, and they were honest, to be honest, they were honest about it. They said, I'm going to go to private school. And then when the policy was changed, they came back to Carroll County and said, great, I can go to the school of my choice now. And there is a movement nationally and even of school choice. So the current practice, to the extent that school choice is available for schools that are below 97%, we have that. And I think that's a good option for families, as demonstrated by how many people are taking advantage of it.
And I agree. And I guess that's why I wouldn't want to entertain going back to Option D because I think overall, the policy has been a net positive for the county in the school choice.
Yeah, but I guess I still feel as well for the student who really excels in a sport. They have to go to an out-of-district school for a specific reason. But yet, if we look at B, the sport that they love best, even if they are still practicing with the team and all of that, I mean, hooray, that's great. But if they're not out there actually playing in games, you know, I think that's hurtful for them as well.
Well, I think to that point, if we choose to implement that policy, that's something we could track. How many students are actually going, you know, how many kids do that? My inclination is not that many. I mean, if I'm, if I was going to bet my paycheck, or maybe I'd bet Mr. King's paycheck on that, I would not think there would be a lot of students who would be in that situation. Because I think what we're signaling very loud and clear is, what is your commitment level to this out-of-district and what is your purpose in going? And if it was for sports and they have to give up a season of playing, and if it's to make the highlight reel and because you think you're going to get a D1 scholarship, you're not going to have a highlight reel for one whole season, you know? And if, so I don't think there would be a tremendous number of students. And remember, they can participate in other sports, even fully, as long as they weren't a varsity athlete preceding. But to your point, Dr. Dorsey, it would be very frustrating for those genuine situations where a child is an athlete and a successful athlete and for unique situations is out of district. There's the cost of us responding to this other situation that's happening right now. That's the negative to us responding to it.
I think moving forward, Option B seems like the most rational one to pursue further. I'm curious as to what kind of grandfathering issues that would present because really what we're trying to address is some existing issues, right? So, okay, let's say you've got someone who's going to be a senior next year. They've been at that school for two years, playing varsity. Do we now tell them, oh, well, now you don't fit the policy. You've got to forfeit your senior year. Like, so it's clearly not, it's not going to address the issues that, it's not going to work right away and it's not going to address the issues that exist today. It will work prospectively.
Right. Any new applications that we get would be subject to the new policy.
And a good way to look at the slide in front of you. It would impact the seven seniors who were there for one year. It would impact the six juniors who were there for one year. It would impact the two sophomores.
Maybe not even all of them.
Correct.
Because they may not have been varsity athletes.
Yeah.
So probably your seven seniors. And that's about all you can guarantee that it would impact. It could, all those juniors could be varsity, could have been varsity athletes or they all could have been junior varsity athletes. Same thing with the sophomores.
So out of this group of 100 and some, we're only going to be talking about, so if we did make a change to some version of Option B, then...
Well, it would affect none of those students.
None of these.
Because the students who are already there have already been participating. It's the new applicant that first year that he or she moves.
If that was implemented in 1718, and that's 1819 data, if it was implemented in 1718, it would affect all seven of those students, assuming they're all playing a varsity sport that they played previously, which may or may not be accurate. The six juniors, possibly, same rationale, and two sophomores. It would impact any freshmen because freshmen weren't playing a varsity sport the year before.
And then we would do a better job of tracking these people. We need to track them to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and they're not jumping hoops and they are playing other sports or whatever. Now, I mean, you know, we need to stay on top of this.
All it takes is one family, you hear it in the community, it's all it takes.
Yes.
And it goes up from there.
Ms. Herbert, when you say track, I just want to be clear.
I just, you know...
That we're not, that we're following our policy and they're not able to participate.
Right.
Right.
That's, yes.
I just want to be clear that's...
Absolutely.
With the exception maybe of, and I'll look to the board if they want us to work in this language, the idea Mr. Kyler talked about earlier, where we build in an exception for students who have lived in that and attended that school and played a year of a varsity sport, whose family has to move to another attendance area in the county. That exception could be made in that situation.
Right. Yeah. A student who's out of district because their request is to remain in their school is pretty much how I was thinking of where that Dr. Lock...
Yeah, right. And if Option B is the choice, then it really only applies if they've played a year of a varsity sport.
Right.
So it sounds like we're getting some consensus around Option B.
I don't like it, but I understand. I understand, you know?
Okay.
I'm the old school, but I just, like, we've already made the change where they can't be hopping semester, I mean, season after season after season. If we then put the brakes on them not allowing to play the love of their life basketball or football or lacrosse for a year, that, you know, it's a deterrent, you know? And I just want people to be honest. And it's hard. And I know because everybody likes athletics.
I don't think they should be able to be on the team at all. And that's just not even saying if they make the team. Because technically, they should be trying out, correct?
All students try it, right. Unless there's teams that don't do cuts.
Correct.
Okay, so maybe we're not as close to consensus as I thought.
That's something that's talked in the community too.
I'm sorry?
That's something that's talked about in the community too, is that there's teams already formed and done, no matter who tries out and who doesn't try out. I mean, there's kids that don't even try out who are on teams. So that's kind of, I mean, that's out there in the community too.
I can't speak to everything that's out in the community. What I can say is, having been around to the schools, I've observed tryouts through the fall and the winter in most schools, and there are students trying out. That's as much as I can say on that subject. I can't respond to...
And if you hear something like that in the community, please let us know and that's something that we can look into. Okay.
Right. And so, I mean, that can, if we have a set, a number of guidelines where we're talking about, you know, attendance requirements, grade requirements, I mean, make that a guideline as well, you have to physically try it. You have to try out for the team.
And I think so too.
It is a requirement, right?
That's what I always thought too.
So just make sure that it's being adhered to.
Yeah, that's 100%.
But there's kids who are not trying out and who are on teams. I've seen it. I mean, that's something that obviously we need to look into a little bit more too.
Even when we don't make cuts, we still have students, right?
Correct.
I think the practice time starts with tryouts.
That's correct.
As far as the number of days of the practice before you can play, it starts with tryouts. So if a student isn't there, they can't, by MPSSA, they can't play.
Like McCabe said, I think we want to know about that when we hear about that so we can address it if it is an issue.
Absolutely.
So, trying to bring clarity to you.
Trying to bring clarity to it. So it doesn't sound like any of us would be leaning towards A, right? We feel like there's enough of a situation that we need to do something, but B is what we're, is everybody comfortable with moving forward with B? It may not be your first preference. So Kenny, are you comfortable with moving forward with some variation of B?
Yes, with the understanding that if we get a lot of positive comments that change our thoughts, that could happen. But I think, that's, I just hate to see kids, the unintended consequences of a C. And I see that happening. And B, from what you're saying, if there are any, it might be one or two, which is still sad. But I think we ought to talk about it and I think it shows we're putting a focus on this issue and the problem of it. And, but I'd love to hear the public comment. I'd love to hear, you know, all of you guys say, is this a great tool to have or is this a pain that isn't worth doing? You know, and I'm not sure how I feel about it. But I'd be willing to go forward with B, but nothing else. And leave, if we default, we're back to A because this is a good system, I think. It's not easy, but it's a good system for the kids.
How about you, Pat?
Well, again, I guess I can, I have the concern of the student who really has a legitimate reason for requesting an out-of-district. They're excelling in a sport, so their out-of-district is approved, so then they move to the out-of-district placement and they're not allowed to play the sport that they're excelling in. I really do feel for, you know, kids who are in that situation, especially when, again, we're, if we're saying that we're not granting the out-of-district just based on athletics, if athletics is just a sidebar to it, if we're really saying, okay, there are other legitimate reasons why, you know, we're granting the out-of-district request, if the kid does well in any sport or if he's on a varsity team at his home school, to me, I'd like to lift that restriction. I would think that we would still want them to participate at the same level in the new school. And again, with a new group of kids, maybe they wouldn't be at that same level. Maybe they would be the sixth man on the team or whatever. I don't know. But again, I just don't like, you know, putting a restriction in place.
So you're concerned with, I guess, just so I'm clear with what you're asking, as we develop B, if there's a way to build in an exception that if, based on circumstances, that a student would be able to play, given, and I guess the concern I have is I'm trying to articulate that or think through what that would look like.
You're going to run into some of the same issues.
That's where the dishonesty comes in. I'm being bullied unmercifully to Ms. Dockerty's point earlier. A parent won't even talk to you, won't even give you a chance to fix it as a principal, which if it's happening and it's legitimate, it's horrible.
Right.
But I can't, and so we're going to be in a situation where we're going to make a ruling on that and then that appeal, because these people are highly motivated, let's, not forget that. They're going to then appeal and that appeal would come to you and it's hard to defend something that you don't have any data, like, you know, where's the...
Well, again, I mean, we're looking at numbers anyway and we're saying we can't really say for sure.
Right.
You know, the circumstance involving any of these students. I was asked how I felt about B. I'm just saying, I feel for the students who are in the situation where they have to be given an out-of-district placement. They're excelling in a sport and yet they're told that they can't play. I just feel for those kids. That's what I'm saying.
Those legitimate things?
Right.
Absolutely. It's really frustrating.
And that's why I feel like I'm between a B and leave it at B.
And back to the...
Yeah, I am. But, but we've got to do something. And maybe, maybe you guys are going to address it in a different way and this just brought focus to it and that'd be great.
Because I know...
You're going to make everybody honest.
Because I know there are some athletic directors that don't like it and I know there's a lot of coaches out there that know me very well that have gotten on the horn and said, this has got to go. You know, I'm sick and tired of seeing these varsity sports when you've got four out of five kids. And I feel bad for the kid sitting on the bench that has been playing with all his other buddies ever since they were seven or eight and they're sitting on the bench because you've got four other kids that come out of district. That is not fair either.
And I...
And because I've lived it and it's not right.
And I will say, I got a lot of emails over the summer as well from the athletic directors and saying...
Yes. And there are athletic directors that don't like it and there's a lot of coaches that don't like it because of that. So...
And I would hope that B might address some of that. For that student, like, that's been sitting, like, the junior who's, you know, the sixth man on the team, assuming, hey, next year I'm going to persevere because I'm going to be the starter, and here comes three students out of district.
And that is exactly what has happened.
And if they, if they were playing a varsity sport the year before, they wouldn't, they wouldn't bump that student. Now, if they didn't play a varsity sport the year before, they would. If they rented an apartment in that district, they're going to bump them. I mean, you know, and I get the frustration, but I think this is a good faith effort.
Right.
And as a board to say, we're trying, we hear you, we're trying to put something in place that responds to the concern but doesn't overly hinder an existing process that's good for so many kids.
And I do thank you because I understand we're talking about children. I'm still worried about those kids sitting on the bench now. It, well, some of you have never coached and some of you have. And everybody wants to play, you know? You've got to have at least 10 kids to play on a varsity basketball team. You can't scrimmage with nine or eight. You've got to have 10 plus a couple. But when you're sitting down there and you're down there at the end and that kid doesn't get in, it's, it's... All right, I'll be quiet.
No, I think, I think this was...
I'm passionate about that because I've lived through it and it's not right.
No, and I think that this is a good conversation to have because, and I appreciate the effort and the thought that went into presenting some options because I think it brought the real issues to light and how, what is the least onerous way to do this? Like, we realize that there's a situation that we're trying to address. And I agree, I think a good way to put it is how you said it, Mr. Schicker, is a good faith effort. We're going to, for these kids that they are potentially abusing the situation, that they're going to now have skin in the game, right? And that's really the situation that we're trying to address. Unfortunately, it won't address the situation immediately, but within, you know, prospectively...
We make things that have curbed other things, so let's hope we can do something here.
But the discussion that we've had, I think, has brought up enough individual points that, you know, we can clarify some of the, so it might be Option B as you presented here, but maybe a couple of additional thoughts behind it.
And the particular areas, the students moving, as Dr. Lockhart expressed earlier.
So if I'm a student, let's say I'm finishing my junior year and my, let's say the family's moving into another attendance area, but, okay, never mind, I think I answered my own question by saying they're moving.
You'll be able to play.
You could stay because you're staying in your school.
Yes.
Or you could go to the new school.
Well, but you could remain, either way, you could either remain with a group of students you were with and...
Be eligible either place.
Yes.
Based on the proposal, yes.
Yeah.
Based on the way we're modifying what's there now. With that, the grandfathering end of a student who's out of district status is to stay in a current...
Right, okay. So it sounds like we're, we've gotten to a point where we're all comfortable with moving forward with Option B.
Staff to produce, bring back...
We'll come to the January board meeting with an Option B with more details.
Right. With a policy.
I'll be anxious to see just feedback. And I know it's such a minute number, but...
We'll add that to the January board meeting, Ms. Lucido, with the idea that, some discussion around that and then out for public comment for 30 days to come back in February.
Right.
And as Mr. Kyler had mentioned earlier, depending on what the feedback of the public comment period is, the board can always make a change at that point if necessary.
And I, just, Dr. Lockhart, just to clarify, since the January board meeting is the 8th of January, is that right?
Yep.
It's likely that we may be delaying our, even if we stay with Option A, it might delay our typical timeline for out-of-district. Minimally, if we don't move forward, more if we do. Again, I think both are achievable. It would just be things we need to look at. Kindergarten enrollment, Mr. Mongol, like you mentioned. But I think we can navigate all those things on that timeline. I think if we go beyond it, it would be really tough to implement next year.
Okay.
And then we have some ROTC information.
Are we ready to move on to our JROTC?
And I realize this might be a tad bit anticlimactic at this point, but I will give you this information. You guys asked for it. You asked some wonderful questions about how JROTC plays into this entire situation. So to start with, here's the data of what our programs are currently, and I want to make a very important delineation. Students in the program are not students in classes, okay? If you're doing everything perfectly, about half of your students in your program are in a class because the classes are very linear. So they're leadership ed one through eight, okay? So you can't take, obviously, three or four until you've taken one. So that's usually in one semester and then they'll schedule four, five, six, seven and the next semester. Does that make sense? So you're always at about half of your kids in the program in a course. And then, like anything else, a chemistry class or a social studies class, students change their schedule. So there are students that love the program, that participate in the extracurricular activities but may not be in a class at all this year, okay? Now, at Century High School, that would mean they're not going back and forth on the bus, but they may be going after school and participating in the color guard, et cetera. So just to delineate, I know you could look at that and say, these statistics are terrible. But being in a course does not mean being in a program and vice versa. Obviously, they want them to take a course every semester, but like anything else, they have to make some decisions about how they want to spend their academic day. So that's what the data is telling you. Obviously, you asked me to look at athletics. So at this point, of the Francis Scott Key students who have made Winters Mill their home school, none of them are participating in athletics. Manchester Valley, there are two Manchester Valley students that made Winters Mill their home school and they're both playing two sports apiece. Westminster is the school with the most students that have gone, are participating in JROTC and there are four athletes and they're playing two sports apiece, basically. They're playing eight sports. So again, at Winters Mill, 51 in a course, 60 enrolled in a course. That means for next semester, 88 in the program. But some of those students may change into a course second semester and may not. It just depends because there's a lot of schedule changes actually going on right now for second semester. But that at least gives you an idea of the size of the programs. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, who'd have thought I have a question?
No, go ahead.
At Century or at Winters Mill?
Yes.
If you want to be in junior ROTC, you must attend that school. Or are there some...
No, at Century High School, the South Carroll and the Liberty students, they take a bus and they go back and forth.
Winters Mill, none take a bus or...
No, Winters Mill, it is their home school. They transferred for their, and I will get to the logistics of why.
Yeah.
That decision was made years ago.
Okay.
So you guys inquired about another program, possibly at Man Valley or Francis Scott Key. That is not impossible, but highly unlikely. So here's what the United States Army expects to have a JROTC program. They want 100 students or 10% of the student population in the program. So currently, we do not have that at Winters Mill. We do have that at Century. If a program reaches 150 cadets, they will provide you another instructor. So we are nowhere near that point. The most important data point here is, congressionally, JROTC programs are limited to 1,709, period. So this is, the only way a new program is established is if one dies. So the sergeant I spoke to, who was, I think in Virginia, said that it could be a 10- to 12-year waiting list, okay? So again, not impossible, but highly unlikely because nationally, they're not establishing new programs and we can't justify that we have the enrollment in the two programs we have now to add programs, okay? I also contacted the Navy and he was a great guy. He said, we're all on the same team. We all go to the same meeting with our congressional advisors. We follow the exact same rule. We're not going to place a naval JROTC program unless the same standards are met. One dies and you're approved. And now, he didn't say 10 years. He said seven to eight-year waiting list. So establishing another program would be quite a process. Again, not impossible. We could open, we could apply, but we really don't have the enrollment in the two we have now to justify that. So just to give you, because you guys asked about that. So the other option was, could the Key, Westminster and Man Valley students stay in their home school and travel back and forth? For Westminster High School, yes. We could do that. For Westminster High School, yes, we could do that, we could start that next year. The problem is the Francis Scott Key and Manchester Valley students. So just to set the tone, you all know and have heard many, many presentations in your time about Career and Tech. The Career and Tech programs are multiple mods, okay? And they're semesterized in a way that they may go mods 2, 3, and 4, one semester, 2, 3, and 4, the next semester they're done. Francis, I'm sorry, JROTC, you can only take one course at a time. So that's why these considerations were created, and I thank everybody in transportation, Mr. Hardesty and Mr. Amili. The problem would be the time missed on both ends. So to set the scene for you, when I was at Manchester Valley last year, at about 9:10, the students got on a bus, they missed part of their flex advisory, they reported to Career and Tech, they returned to Manchester Valley about 2:17, 2:18. It worked pretty well, okay? And that's the longest drive. But that was to go to a three-mod course. JROTC, again, you can only take one course at a time, so they would be giving up. And let's, so let's look at the considerations. And option 1, they would be, would arrive at Winters Mill for JROTC 30 minutes late, so they'd miss 30 minutes of the JROTC course, and arrive back at their home school 20 minutes late. The pro, there is no cost to that. So our wonderful transportation folks could do that with no cost, using existing bus runs. Consideration 2 would be if you scheduled the course at Winters Mill mod 4, they had missed 20 minutes of their home school course, and then return 35 minutes late for the JROTC course.
How long is the JRC, JROTC course?
It's a mod, so 86 minutes.
Okay.
So they're missing a pretty big chunk of two academic courses. Again, though, pro, no cost. Consideration 3 would be if you put it mod 2 at Winters Mill, the pro would be they'd miss 25 minutes of flex advisory, which is the easiest to swallow as a student, but they would still arrive back 20 minutes late at their home school. The con would be a cost, about $26,000 a year estimated, to run another bus run. But the problem also would be, so to play this out, if we do this at Francis Scott Key, you're gonna have a mixed bag of students, let's say, grade 9 through 12. They're not gonna all be able to go and take the same course, mod 2. Does that make sense? Because they can only take, they have to take the courses in order. So your freshmen want to come and take Leadership Ed 1, your sophomores, Leadership Ed 2. So you have a group of them on the bus, that's where it would also fall apart. Because most of the JROTC courses, they run once a day, and they have one classroom. So logistically, this would be much more difficult. So when the, all the JROTC, I'm sorry, all the Career and Tech kids leave Man Valley, they're going to multiple programs. So they have a busload of juniors and seniors, but they're in multiple programs, and they're all scheduled at the same time. Again, not completely impossible, but very difficult because of the logistics of going to a school to just take one course. So honestly, and you, Kenny, you said, were there students attending Winters Mill JROTC for athletics before this policy? Yes. Now, were they in the program? Yes. Sherry Breen will come back right now and tell you, she'll, they were. And when I got there, they were in the program. But that ended when this policy went into effect. The kids there are truly there for that program. That's my alt, I mean, I can say that with 100% sincerity, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, because I do know that I called around, and I do know that there are counties that send them back to their home school, and they have to participate in their home school. And that's what it's all about.
Is there any kind of an option in the transportation with smaller vans or something to maybe minimize the cost, but get them back and forth? Because I see what you're saying, they, it's not as simple as saying, well, they're all gonna do mod 2, and we're gonna stick them on the same bus. It's not gonna happen.
Right, right.
But I don't know what else you can do.
Mr. Hardesty's on his way. Sorry.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to the table.
Thank you. There's still the issue of ride time, how long it's gonna take, even if you were in an automobile or a van to go from Francis Scott Key to Winters Mill, or from Manchester Valley to Winters Mill. There's also the issue of where we're required to use school buses by ComAR, unless there is an exception granted by the state superintendent. And we have never requested an exemption or exception from the state superintendent. There are some school systems that are utilizing vans for smaller populations of students. But we could accomplish what we're trying to accomplish with school buses. It's more of an issue of ride time and the distance between the schools. Thank you.
And just to throw this out, this, again, because I tried to look at every angle, and I did have a really good conversation with the Colonel at Winters Mill and communicated with the Colonel at Century. The solution someday, and this is not to open a new can of worms, but what both of them said they would love to try, maybe, was to have a centralized program at a building like Career and Tech or Carroll Community or something, that all be together, then everyone would be on the same playing field, and they could all stay at their home school. Now, that's a cost, and a lot of things would have to go into that. But that would be, in the perfect world, we would have the Carroll County JROTC program. But again, logistically, that would be, you know, a lot would have to go into getting that done.
Yeah, we're gonna have some of that empty space.
Maybe, anyone else?
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, so just to close the loop on that one. So we're not saying that the discussions are dead, but there's no immediate follow-ups on JROTC.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
So I think that's all we had for this particular work session. I want to thank everyone for, and clearly, a lot of work and preparation went into these discussions today, so I appreciate it. I think we have a good path forward. And so we'll be looking for something at the January board meeting to review for the out-of-district. And we will adjourn till 4 o'clock for the, where we'll reconvene for the budget work session.
I'd like to thank our principals and staff for being here, giving some input from the school perspective. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.